First Monday in February and February seventh, six thirty P M. This is a meeting of the regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel will be presiding. And I'll call to being to order at this time. Would you please arise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and make sure that everyone present has signed on the clipboard over there. So that it's recorded in the minutes. Um, we have the roll call, Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Sharpie.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Batchery.
Here.
Phil is present and supposed to have a one vacancy which will be filled in this evening. Um, any agenda additions by anybody? I do have three or four of them here, so I do have a couple. Well, this might be add item K to consent agenda. Appoint Amy Newsom as temporary representative to Sibley County Library Board. And again, that's a temporary.
I had a, I had a question.
Yes.
About the consent agenda.
Which item?
So it would be E, F, G.
Okay.
And I guess possibly H.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my question would be as if obviously we're maybe coming to terms with the uh, um, policy that I think that maybe, maybe it's started to spark some of, some of these uh, resignations. Um, so I don't.
So we'll just take those four items that you mentioned and put them under uh, new business? And discuss it further there?
Yeah.
And not, and we'll just eliminate them from the consent?
Yeah.
Okay? So items E, F, G, and H will be moved to new business. Alright. Um, under reports, item D, add twenty twenty-one annual report ambulance department. And then item eleven, fire department twenty twenty-one annual report. Under new business, item eighteen with the council's approval, I'd like to move that uh, to just before the reports, in other words, right after item seven, under communications. Item eighteen, I believe there's someone that is going to be present this evening relating to that decision on a liquor permit. And I would just soon not have them be uh, sitting around waiting for their part of the agenda. So again, item eighteen, moving it to after item seven. Anything else? Hearing none, motion to order to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Batchery, second by Councilmember Thomas to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Motion carried. Moving down into the consent agenda then, uh, the following items remain. Item A, approval of the bills. Item B, uh, approval of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two city council workshop minutes. Item C, January eighteen, twenty twenty-two city council minutes. Item D, approve hiring of Samantha Gregory as an E M T student with Arlington Area Ambulance Service. Then moving up, item E would then be appoint Jeremy Otto as first assistant fire chief through December thirty-first. Um, item J, appoint Doug Mockentune as fire chief through December thirty-first, tw- twenty twenty-three. And I'm getting these all mixed up, excuse me. Um, appoint Jeremy Otto as first assistant, that would be item E. F would be appoint Doug Mockentune fire chief through December thirty-first. And G would be appoint Amy Newsom as temporary representative to Sibley County Library Board.
So is it through twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two for Doug?
Twenty-three.
Through twenty twenty-three?
For Doug?
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know for sure, that's what it had on here, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Sharpie to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda uh, with the amendments as read. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Moving on to uh, item five at this time, is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications. In your packet this, this would, for this meeting was the minutes of the cemetery committee meeting. And the parks committee. Phil, did you have any comment on either one of those? Alright, I'll just make one comment on each of them. Uh, it seems like the um, one of the big things come out of the cemetery. We have been talking about having computerized or moving all the cemetery records uh, to be computerized. And we have two members of that committee now that have stepped up and said we are interested in helping out with that, so. Um, so that is something that will be worked on through the summer and then we can deal with it when it comes to uh, funding and choosing a uh, software that we would like to use for that if the council still feels they do. Parks committee, uh, various items, the one that probably brought the most attention uh, and the highest on their list of priorities is to resurface the um, basketball courts at Four Seasons Park. Councilmember Morgan, anything else that I can think that, that sort of moved up as the most important one?
Yeah, that's, that's the way I.
There were some other minor discussions. Right, any questions on either one of those reports? If not, uh, we will go to the item eighteen, which was moved up now to be item eight after the one I just read. Dealing with the um, approve or deny off-sale Sunday liquor uh, permit to Dietl Incorporated, which was formerly Arlington Liquors. So this is not a new business, but a uh, a business that was sold recently. Um, are the owners here? They are not? Okay, I was told that uh, the new owners would be here. So again, this is just taking over uh, what used to be Arlington Liquors. It's still going to be called, I'm sorry, it's still going to be called Arlington Liquors, owned by Dietl Incorporated. Sean Dietl, former resident of Arlington, is moving back to, or um, coming back to town to run a business. He lives in Belle Plaine currently. And uh, this then would replace the license now held by Renee Dos.
I'll make an impression to uh, motion to approve the off-sale Sunday sale liquor license permit to Dietl Inc., Arlington Liquors.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchery, second by Councilmember Morgan to approve the uh, off-sale Sunday liquor per- liquor license permit to Dietl Incorporated. Further questions, discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, moving back to reports. Item eight, January Public Works Report. Kirby Wickworth. Good evening, Kirby.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Jump right into it. Uh, yeah, it's kind of s- slow season other than snow. Uh, snow has kept us busy last couple of months. Um, primary, primarily get done with our removal and we have quite a bit still the next couple of days to kind of get out. Um, good snowfall, we're busy for a couple of days on it, just shoring up a lot of details and um, so we've been busy with that. The snow's kind of got built up in spots that we got to get out and uh, haul away um, off of boulevards and stuff like that. Uh, so we've been busy with that. Um, kind of our annual shop cleanup, once a year cleanup and uh, give the shop a makeover. We've had some benches to assemble and then the picnic tables from last year for the parks yet that, that we're putting together. And uh, Summit, uh, the Sprinkler Company was at the community center last week and they completed the dry air uh, main pipe replacement up in the attic up here. Um, which we had a lot of rusting going on and, and little pinholes and stuff like that. So that was in our C I P to get done this year. And so that's, that's uh, finished up. Other than that, just kind of keeping busy with other things. Uh, we had an ice storm in December that we had quite a few street lights that go bad. Um, some of them turned purple, which people probably noticed, but that's covered by our warranty. So I'm working on getting those shipped out, getting the new ones in. Um, so I've, I've had some of that work when it's warm enough to do. Yeah, keeping up with skating rink, keeping the skaters happy up there. Um, Daniel's been busy with building checks and minor maintenance here and there in buildings, but uh, so far so good. No heating issues or anything like that. Um, we had our chipper down to R D O in Vancato, just some kind of basic repair on that. So we're ready to go for hopefully some tree work uh, once we get more consistent warm days uh, coming up. And that's kind of the gist of it, so. If you guys have any questions or concerns, I think so far the snow seasons went relatively well for us. I mean, nothing, it's been quiet as far as complaints.
No big breakdowns or anything?
Usually we get a few a year and it's been pretty quiet, so I guess that's good.
Alright, anything for Kirby? I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Good job, Kirby.
I have to interject here, when I was taking roll call, I forgot to introduce the other two gentlemen at the table on my left. Uh, in place of Amy Newsom, who is unable to be with us tonight, is Phil Mangus. And on the, my right is Ross Arnesson, our city attorney, welcome to you two. What's that? You are.
You are tonight.
Yeah.
You're in the hot seat.
Alright, item nine, January ambulance report, Jamie.
Good evening.
Make sure the microphone is on, please.
Yes. There you go. Alright, good evening, folks. Um, just to go through the ambulance report, you guys got a copy of the annual report for the service? There's going to be some changes, so I'll, I'll kind of point those out to you. Yeah, and Amy and I were just kind of uh, following up on some of the numbers and such today. So there's just a couple of changes that I'll shed some light on too. And um, if you have any questions when we go through this, just let me know. So pretty much between page one and uh, four, everything remained the same from last year. It's just good information to pass along in regards to our P S A and uh, our partner agencies. And then um, five and six, just kind of touch base on some of the things that we've been doing by the ambulance service. Um, including some of the grants that we're able to obtain and so on. So if there's any questions regarding that, please let me know. It's not an all-inclusive thing, uh, it's just, there's a couple of things that I forgot to make mention of as far as volunteering goes. But uh, those can be, those can be adjusted as fit. Um, on page seven, with the total calls for twenty twenty-one, that number should be five hundred and sixty-eight. That'll be your first correction. And then I did do the twenty twenty um, ambulance calls just for comparison. And then uh, we stuck with the dispatch request and then also our en route times. Um, for twenty twenty-one, our average en route time was three point two minutes. And again, just to reiterate that our city policy requires us to have an en route time of eight minutes. That's remarkable, that means uh, staff are doing excellent, yes. Um, and then a couple more changes on page nine. If you look uh, to the box on the far left and upper left-hand corner, Arlington should actually be four seventy-nine. Um, Dryden remain the same at four, Washington Lake Township at twenty-eight, Green Isle was actually twelve. That'll be another correction. Uh, Kelso is three, Justinland is five, and that was the last correction up in that box. And then you can see the, the numbers for New Auburn Township, other locations, which would be other um, counties that we assisted with, other mutual aid uh, transports. And then Henderson and Transit listed under there. And then so, if you look under those two boxes at the top, the total number of calls for service in the city of Arlington, that number needs to change to one ninety-six. Now, if you're trying to punch the numbers, if you look at five sixty-eight, I did not include thirty paid and unpaid standby events in the township numbers. Those, those did not get included in those. Um, so that would be like your football games, um, any type of events for the rodeo, the fair, um, anything that uh, was a paid event as far as like raceway items and stuff. I did not include those in on those numbers, but they did get included in the main final number. But not the township numbers. And then something new I added, just a quick financial snapshot underneath that. Um, the city administrator was able to kind of help me out in regards to um, getting the actual numbers. You can see that we were, we were over budget, which was really nice to see. Even though our expenses increased, our, our, our revenue increased along with it. So it was, it was a nice give and take. Um, I also kind of wanted to touch base in regards to the gas repairs. I know that there is some discussion regarding um, trying to obtain a new truck. Uh, just uh, food for thought, right now we are still down one truck. Um, we had some major mechanical issues that the demers had to be taken care of. Um, unfortunately, we did not get a phone call today, we were hoping to get it back. Um, but as soon as the demers comes back, the diesel truck will be going back to North Central because um, they, they need to identify, it's not, I don't believe it's an injector issue, it might be a turbo issue. So um, we have to have Matt take a look at it. So it's just kind of like, if it isn't one thing, it's another. So I'm really pushing about this new truck. It'd be really nice. And the, the fun thing about that is too, is the fact that it takes a while for us to get them. So it, it, we're looking at a year and a half before we are able to actually like have it physically in front of us at the time of ordering it. So, and payment is not due until that truck is delivered. And so that's just kind of one of our fighting points for that. Um, and then again, goals for twenty twenty-one. Um, number one is reflected in your guys' council packet tonight. Uh, we do have copies of those transport and non-transport surveys that we will be sending out to patients. It's just, it's a continuation of our quality improvement process. Uh, we want to know, you know, if our skill sets have met their needs, if our professionalism has met our patients' needs. And we, we want that transparency, you know, that's quite important for us. Um, and then also on number two, I am looking into follow-up with critical care classes for our paramedics. This would just kind of help expand our scope of practice in regards to transfers that we can take out of this facility here in town. And then also too, um, continuing to foster that professional relationship with the partners such as the fire departments and other E M S agencies that we, we partner with, that we depend on too. And then you'll see, I did keep the definitions and I did keep the acronyms because that seemed to be a really good point last year. People really like to understand what our technical EMS mumbo jumbo is. And uh, and then also appendix C is a copy of the um, letter that got sent to the House of Finance that um, Amy and I were able to submit this last year. Just to kind of, as a testimony and how important our rural ambulance services are. So, for your guys' review, any questions regarding the annual report?
So, so I have one, I, I don't know that it's necessarily going to be directed at you and it's more just a talking point of, you know, we, the, the last meeting, we talked about the redistricting. And I don't know if that's like, uh, maybe Ross, if, I don't know if you've seen that in the past, does that, when they redistrict, does it end up, you know, like affecting the ambulance area at all?
The public list, eh?
Yeah, you know how they were looking at that? It wouldn't affect it at all.
Okay, anything else?
Um.
Questions?
Anything else for the annual report? No?
No.
Okay, I'll keep moving on here. Um, in the, the council packet, you were able to get the quotes for Life Pack and the Stryker, um, oh, the Stryker Life Pack and then the Zoll. And Mark is going to kind of touch base in regards to those items and what he's found with them.
So we were tasked with uh, getting some bids, some proposals for a couple of the monitors. Those monitors in a sentence are as important to the rig as the steering wheel is. You quite simply cannot have one without the other. They do absolutely everything for us when we get in there, including A E D, cardiac rhythms, cardiac arrest, the whole nine yards. Uh, so we went on and collected a couple of bids. Life Pack came in really nice, at just a little under sixty grand. But the really nice thing that Life Pack did is on trade-in, we have two Zoll machines currently. Zoll only offered us five hundred dollars on a trade-in for their own product. Where Life Pack gave six thousand back to the city, so that was pretty cool. Zoll didn't offer any price breaks, didn't offer any discounts, just kind of gave us like we're a billion dollar business and didn't, didn't do a thing. Where Life Pack really went out of their way, worked with us, stayed in touch with us, called us back. For example, when it was all done, like three days later, he called me back and says, Mark, that trade-in, mm-mm, that's wrong, that can go up to six figures, so. We're very pleased with Life Pack, they offer the same thing as the Zoll did. And so we recommend that we go with Life Pack, absolutely.
Did they, uh, did they bring in and allow you to demo or like put your hands on?
I think last year.
No, unfortunately not. I, I have some experience with that particular um, system. And uh, it is, when it comes down to certain medical equipment, um, our medical director always requires uh, some sort of approval. Because they have to know what we're using, they have to approve it and that sort of thing. When we obtained Dr. Wilcox for our medical director, he is actually for Life Pack because a lot of the services around here have those particular machines.
Okay.
Um, when I talked to him, let him know that we had Zoll and he said, no, it's, that's fine, keep Zoll. He said, if that's what your folks are trained on, that's perfectly fine, I'm familiar with it. He said, absolutely stick with it. When we looked at kind of replacing them last year before the whole um, air conditioning thing went down, um, we, I, I kind of compared my experiences with Zoll and Life Pack. And Life Pack seems to be very rugged, but then they also are very, very super user friendly. Whereas a lot of services do carry Zoll and a lot of schooling do utilize both machines. Um, so they're very, very easy to learn and I don't feel our, our crew would have any issues with that if we were to choose to go to Life Pack. Um, the nice thing is, is it also integrates fully with our image trend software. So that was one of the biggest selling points, is that it takes a, a downloaded program and a plugin. You could plug into the Tough Pad and all the vitals, all the cardiac rhythms, everything gets automatically uploaded. Whereas in order for Zoll to do that, we would have to have the Zoll program uploaded and that's most likely the difference. So it just for ease of process, lack of, you know, trying to minimize the errors, especially with that continuity of care between our providers and the facilities, um, it just, it, I'm just kind of leaning more towards the Life Pack side. And this just, just blew me away to know that there was that big of a difference between pricing on both products. But they're very comparable. And so yeah, um, I, I per- I personally prefer Life Pack, but every other EMS provider has their own preference. Whether it's Zoll or Life Pack is the way to go. But as far as consistency goes, I mean, either which way is fine, I would prefer Life Pack though.
Yeah, you're, you're paramedics overwhelmingly went with Life Pack when given an option, straight.
Yeah.
What uh, what did we have in the C I P this year? Do we know offhand?
Yeah, is this budgeted for?
It is, I do believe it would be under the C I P, the four oh one, um.
Just trying to figure out a dollar figure.
Yes, and I think it was like sixty-one thousand, I do believe.
Oh, so we, we're right under.
We're.
They're doing twenty thousand a year too.
Oh, that.
Yeah, I seen that.
Yeah.
Interest-free.
Where Zoll is ninety-eight, your check please.
Yeah.
Oh, geez.
Light Pack is, yeah, twenty year, no interest.
Yep.
We budgeted though for it, so I don't know if it makes a difference, we just pay it off.
And that's just it, that's another one of the big key selling points is, I was really surprised too that they were able to actually offer up an annual payment plan and interest-free nevertheless. And but they were, they were wanting our service.
How long does that piece of the equipment last typically?
Um.
Is it twenty years, like they were going to give you an interest rate? We're not quite. You haven't halfway paid off and then you need another one, yeah?
I, I would say uh, without incident, I want to say it could be anywhere between three to eight years.
Oh, okay.
Depending on how soon all of the new technology comes rolling out. Um, I think there's like. That's just the thing, yeah. As, as long as the technology is moving forward, it, it'll vary. But um, I believe a lot of the bugs and the kinks have been worked out of this particular pack. And um, yeah, I would say at least thirty-eight.
Then this is, yeah, then this is back on our C I P or whatever as well for the next cycle then, since it's going to be so often.
Yeah, that's.
Well, we need to make sure that.
Yep.
It gets thrown back on there.
Yeah.
And if it's budgeted for, I'm fine with going with um, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of Life Pack from Stryker in the amount of six thou- sixty thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchery, second by Councilmember Sharpie to approve the purchase of Life Pack from Stryker in the amount of sixty thousand, six zero, seven nine, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents. That'd be in three interest-free annual payments.
I don't think we have to do that though.
I, well, it's budgeted this year, so.
Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion?
Do we want to note that uh, we're just going to pay it or how?
Um, yeah, if we have it in our budget, I guess my motion would be to pay it.
Okay.
This year.
Okay, again, the motion to contain the verbiage that it would be paid for in one sum?
If it's in our budget, yes.
If it's in the budget?
Right.
Which I'm almost positive is.
Except there's sixty-one thousand there, so then we're sold.
Anything else? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Thank you guys.
Motion carried. Thank you.
I did a couple more tidbits. Uh, so I've been uh, working with a Gaylord fighter uh, in regards to putting together uh, mock crash uh, right before prom time for Sibley Schools. Uh, so within the next couple of months, we'll be meeting with them and some other entities that'll be actively involved in this. But uh, just for community involvement, I think would be a really, really cool thing, I just wanted to share. And then I suppose last but not least.
He's going to give me grief.
Um, so uh, in regards to anticipating the fire department's needs and to just, you know, be this whole team player kind of thing, especially. You laugh. It's okay. Um, in regards to uh, trying to foster this relationship between the ambulance and fire, um, I have signed up for fire school. And I start my classes tomorrow night, uh, it's through Minnesota West. Um, this is to kind of give me a foundation of what firefighting is all about and to help support this fire department's needs. Uh, I do anticipate on applying appropriately for the fire department to help them out, especially with some coverage. But um, yeah, I just wanted to share with you guys that I have signed up and started my classes.
Good for you.
Wow.
To support them.
She's a probate now, guys.
I was just going to say, they used to be alive there.
Yeah, I know. But yeah, I just needed it.
Building that bridge, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're progress.
Yes. I think this is, this is a big deal, so.
The council is equally proud of you.
This, this is good. But yes, I figured I'd just share that with you, so.
Good.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Should be fun.
You have anything else?
No, just proud of you for your endeavor and inspiring work.
Well.
Good job.
This is, this will be good, so. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks guys. Yeah, thanks guys.
Item ten, December twenty twenty-one, people's service O and M report. Any questions on that? These, this was sent out to you. Reviewed it and didn't see anything that jumped out at me, but this, um, services they provided to residents throughout that month? Anything? All right, we will move along. Item eleven, Fire Department, twenty twenty-one, annual report.
So, you guys have the annual report in front of you, which breaks down twenty twenty-one. If you guys have a second to read, oh, if you have any questions, I will try to answer to the best of my ability.
Doug, if you wanna sit up to the microphone, that'd be great.
I think he's official now. Anyhow, chief, chief manager.
So, all right. Just one thing that popped into my mind when I was looking at this, uh, what's involved when you, uh, secure the helipad for a helicopter coming in? What is involved in that?
So, we get to the hall, two people take our pickup up. Um, we got badged, get in the hospital. Uh, John's got a little cart up there, he's got some oil in it, we section off both streets on each side of the hospital.
Okay. Okay.
That's about it. Wait till a cop there comes and, until it leaves again.
Okay. So, how many in that, how many, uh, it takes, how many people to do that?
Uh, we just have two people go with the pickup.
Okay.
Um, we've tried it a few different ways over the years, and pretty much everybody that come to the hall gets credit for coming up to the hall, so.
Cause I know our police department had indicated that they may be able to handle that, we'll have to see what, you know, with the new chief coming on board now, hopefully soon, and we'll have to see if that can be worked out. Okay. Other questions for Doug? Rigs are all working pretty well, any issues?
Uh, nothing that I know about.
Okay.
I really like how it's laid out as far as the, um, CIP, how far out it goes.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I know that, you know, we're trying to do our tenure and stuff, and it would be nice to see it even further. Because, especially your department, because I know that there's stuff, big stuff that comes up, and if we don't throw it on something right away, that it might get missed and then cause us some issues. Well, not issues, I mean, it's gonna happen, but, I mean, maybe it'll hurt when it happens instead of being prepared for it, you know? So, that's maybe something to. It's pretty much laid out, out, you know, quite a ways on here, so.
How many, um, well, how many are on the fire department now? I know we're dealing with an issue that we'll be discussing in a little while, but currently, what kind of numbers are you looking at?
Right now, I'm sitting back, twenty-four people.
Twenty-four?
Yes.
Is that including or not including the ones that submitted their resi- that's?
Nope, they're, that's off of.
That's off of there, okay.
And I've got, um, Jamie will be starting class tomorrow. I've got one other gentleman, if we can get him in, but I don't think there'll be any classes available till next, um, like winter again.
Oh, really?
So, I got another applicant, and then, um, we got one currently going to school right now, so. We got a few people coming on, so. And we're open with the housing, it'll be built in town and, uh, some of the equipment and whatever that, and we'll have some more people coming in for daytime control.
So, is there a plan to like reach out to like Data Metacraft and the other ones, the other businesses to?
Yeah, we've had, uh, one guy from Data Metacraft, I believe he's on Gunco Fire right now. Uh, I've had one of our guys talk to him, so. Something he might be a little bit more of a night guy, he's working second shift, but.
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
Or whatever, civil paper, you know, like.
Yeah.
We'll get him and talk to him, you know, set himself set up, so. Um, yeah, we're still talking, we're, sorry, it's kinda new to me here, so.
You're doing great.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, we're, um, Amy and I talked, she put up Facebook post all on Friday, I believe, so. Most, have to be following time to get members, so, I hope someone.
Sounds good.
Mm-hmm.
And they only run the school usually once a year, usually wintertime or something, or what?
Yeah, it's usually they start about the end of December, first of January. It's, uh, hundred and sixty hours, so it's, you know, it gets to be
Yeah.
four or five month course for them. And then we also have them do a MSRV course after that, a basic versus twelve years. And that's like, uh, the initial, about, I think, another sixty hours. So, they got some pretty good time to best thing to start. But, one good thing, I'm getting guys from other departments coming in help, everything is done ready.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah?
And we pay for other training, the ones that we bringing in?
Um, when they're through with all their schooling and all their classes and everything are passed, um, Minnesota State Board takes care of it, so.
Oh.
They reimburse us for it, um, somewhere along the way, so.
So, do we pay for the ones that we're bringing in, that we're putting through school, or they're paying for themselves?
I believe it's initially that, that the city pays, and then we get reimbursed.
That we're paying. And then we get reimbursed.
Yeah.
So, most of the board, I'm not paying.
Okay. Sure. Yeah.
And then we're right off, but we do reimburse for it.
Okay. So, I mean, just a thought, I mean, if we're hurting on people and we need people, I mean, we could consider maybe in the future of, you know, doing some kind of sign-on bonus or something like that, you know, to help.
I think there's already one there.
Yeah. There is, pretty good.
Someone said those already.
I thought it was longevity and stuff like that, more so than a sign-on, but there is sign-on.
There is a sign-on. Yep, yep, that's what I remember seeing on Facebook also.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But it's just like, you're really getting people going to you now, but it was hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think with the, with the new businesses, you know, and, and businesses expanding, um, it could be, uh, that, that could be a really good, uh, you know, thing for us, uh, especially when they support it. And I know that, you know, Scott Equipment and this, uh, Data Metacraft are, obviously, uh, Hogg and Miller lumber also supports it as well, so. Um, and I don't mean to miss any of the, any of the others, but, uh, especially when you have a lot of people, right? You have more odds, so if you had, you know, fifty employees and three of them are firemen, then, then obviously that helps, you know, as you get more employees. But if you got five employees, you know, that ratio is a little bit tougher, so.
Okay, anything else for Doug? All right, thank you. And good luck in your new position, I'm sure you'll do just very fine.
Are, are you able to hang around for when we discuss this other item?
Yeah, can you, can you hang around for a little bit?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item twelve, ordinances, we have a few first readings. Uh, Phil, do you wanna talk about these?
Yeah, so. So, as you're all aware, we re-zoned David Menford's property, which is right here, given the fact that in a B-one district residential, um, houses are not allowed there. So, sorry. No, it's on the low, sorry, I'm on my way, about that. Um, so, this is just, obviously, we have to amend the comprehensive future plan because it was re-zoned. And if you look at the first reading and the other one, it is re-zoning the zoning map. So, it's pretty straightforward stuff, it's what we did for Tony Hopps' property. Um, there's really not much more to say, uh, if you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer it.
So, one is, is redoing the zoning map?
No, the, the first one.
First one is?
Ordinance three thirty-nine is for the comprehensive plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And then ordinance three forty is for the zoning map.
Okay. Both dealing with the same piece of property.
Correct, yes.
So, at our planning and zoning meeting, you talked about doing some kind of, some.
Zone, zone report for the, this surrounding area right here.
Right, because, I mean, really what this is referencing is only that little square
Correct.
within the big red square, so the blacked out square. So, this is all that we're talking about zoning right now. And I guess my question, there is nothing else, no other buildings or anything outside of, right now, um, the, the property that Menford bought inside that little, uh, the bottom, uh, right corner, that has a building on it, the rest of the red does not have a building on it, that's all ag already. So, my, my thought is, we're taking that whole red area and bringing it into that.
That is the plan, and the reason why we, I have to do a zoning report on it, because originally, um, that property changed hands. Um, and I got a letter from the previous owners saying that they're okay with the rezoning. Now, under Minnesota statute, if you get a letter saying that it's okay, we can rezone it. However, it was going to be, the way the procedures work, we're going to incorporate with the rezoning of David Menfords. But given that, um, certain things kinda didn't line up right, and during that time, the owners changed hands, um, I'm going to reach out to the new owners to make them aware based on procedures that, hey, we're looking to rezone this back to ag. Um, and at the same time, based under Minnesota statutes, I need to do a zoning report on it, that's how the structure, um, is. I was not aware of that when I asked them for a letter of consent to the previous owner. I did a little bit more digging just to see how Minnesota does it, and then that's when I found out I need to do a zoning report, and I had to spend some time creating a report, um, the layout of it, which I showed the planning and zoning committee. If you guys like to, I could show you how the report's laid out, I could pull that up for you guys if you're interested.
So, these two are, what you're talking about in these, or in this first reading, is that we're taking that whole red area?
We're just focusing on David Menford's property right now. We, I need to, in order to do the remaining portion, I need to do that zoning report based on Minnesota statutes. I cannot do the whole area, um, right now. And the reason why we're doing David Menfords first is because he requested a rezoning. The owners of the, of this area right here are not requesting.
But are, are they okay with it?
That I need to reach out to them and see if they're okay with it. Even if they're not okay with it, we can still rezone as long as I have a report. That will, we will determine after public hearing, when we decide to, um, when it's in question.
But it, but if they're okay with it, then you could go ahead and just rezone it.
Even if they're okay with it, unless they request it themselves, I still need to do the report. They, in, in order for us to do it, um.
Well, to me, it makes more sense just to rezone that whole parcel instead of just that one and then do the rezoning again, that's my opinion, but.
I understand, but we.
To get it done for Dave.
But that depends on what they intend on using that property for.
Right.
Wasn't it my understanding that, uh, the guy that bought the little lower right was trying to buy that other land? That was the intention, and then, so that deal must, must not be working out, or somebody else bought it?
He bought it another half acre, so in total, he has an acre.
And that's what he was planning.
So, that's.
And that's what, and that's what he was planning.
That's the little block there?
Yes.
That is the little block.
But when it comes to this, I have to follow Minnesota statutes and procedures. Um, and the league confirmed it would be that unless that, um, owner of this property right here actually files for a rezoning, if we want to rezone it, it would be good practice for us to do a report, just to have record of something like that.
So, right now, we're dealing with the little black box in the corner, and that's the only thing we're, this is asking, I guess.
Right, so my concern is, is that spot zoning, Ross?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we should not do.
Well, at the same time, with spot zoning, I, I can't really speak on spot zoning right now because, well, yes, Ross admits to spot zoning, and I'm looking into, like I said, this is why I'm doing a report to rezone that whole portion. Because ultimately, the end goal, based on our comprehensive plan, this B-one district was, from what I understand from our comp plan, should not have been zoned B-one, 'cause the future of this area right here is supposed to be residential. I still don't, I'm looking to see the reasoning why this, that whole area was zoned B-one. Um, I know, I found record why this was zoned B-one, because the owner of this parcel right there had a commercial business there. So, I, I don't know why that surrounding area was zoned B-one, I mean, I'm still looking at the records of it. So, to avoid spot zoning, we're, I, that's why I'm gonna do a report and try to rezone that.
Okay.
Sounds to me like this needs to go back to planning and zoning for clarification, it should've, it should've come to the council with all of this stuff worked out. Now, we're having a member of planning and zoning questioning whether this is the right thing to do.
I mean, that, that's fine, like I said, it, originally, this wasn't, I was trying to avoid this issue, given I had a letter from the.
Oh, what's the, is there, is there an urgency behind it, I mean?
He wants to, he wants to have occupancy out there, I'm sure this year. But I, I don't, I don't know for sure, I mean, he bought the property, right, and he's.
From my conversations with the gentleman, when it hit spring, he would like to start building.
Right.
Um, and, like I said, originally, my, eh, my goal was to rezone, the ultimate, all, the goal was always to rezone the whole section. It's just through my studies, I found out, given that a part of it is not technically his property, I have to do a report on that. It, um, even with the owner's signed consent of it, you need, you should do a zoning report to rezone that area. Because it's not them requesting it, it's the city looking to rezone it, so therefore, we should have documentation on the reason why we want to rezone that area.
So, what color is that little right corner gonna go to if we?
Green.
This is gonna go to green, as a green.
So, it would just be switching everything over to that ag residential.
Right, this, this whole section.
But if you just take Menford's little corner there, that's totally spot zoning, and you really can't do that. That's why it was our recommendation that we take that whole quarter and, and zone it to that ag residential or whatever.
So, how long would it take for you to get that process rolling?
The report, I literally gotta have it next time, which is in March, first, third, first Thursday.
Well, I mean, you've gotta contact the property owner, right?
Right, and li- and like I said, even if they're, even if they want to keep it as B-one, as long as we do a zoning report based on Minnesota statutes, we can rezone that ag one again. It, we don't necessarily, it's, it's good faith to reach out to them to see if they want.
Yeah, I'm just trying to speed it up, so if you get somebody who's trying to build.
I don't think they're trying to build in winter now.
Well, not.
Yeah, but if.
But I mean, if we drag it to spring. Well, yeah, no, I, I agree, yeah.
Next thing you know, it's April.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, if we get it done at the March, at the March planning and zoning, it can come back here. What does the calendar look like, March? We could come back for the March seventh, um, council meeting.
Which, that was my goal, to have that, just for the fact that.
For your first reading and then second reading would be the end of March.
For a first reading and the second reading. The second meeting in March.
Or third weekend in March.
I, we, but.
It's probably plenty of time.
It will still be, we'll still keep these ordinances, and we need to do two separate ordinances for the remainder of that portion, so. I mean, if you guys want to, we could, I could table us until we do a report and make a decision on, have a public hearing on the others.
Well, I think it's just a good practice, like you said, we're looking at spot zoning to eliminate that. It doesn't sound like we're gonna jeopardize any, but we might as well wait to even read it off until we get the whole thing.
Is there a motion to, uh?
Table twelve and thirteen.
Item twelve and thirteen?
Did you wanna say something, I guess, before I?
Ross.
Ross, did you?
Well, well, just, just a general comment, uh, spot zoning is not flat-out illegal, it's just, um, not recommended for obvious reasons. Um, as far as, um, maintaining property values, uh, proper use of city, uh, resources, things like that. So, that's why you don't have, uh, attempt not to have, uh, single-family home, gas station, um, liquor store, single-family home, you know, you get the idea. Uh, so, i- it is frowned upon, um, there's always spot zoning in, in every community, and some of it is grandfathered in. I'm sure you can drive up and down the streets and think. I'm sure you can drive up and down the streets and think, gee, what is that doing there, you know? Uh, it, it just happens. And then there are situations like this one where, you know, the, the property hasn't been utilized, uh, until recently, and it does, uh, there is a strip of commercial along that township road. Uh, and then, of course, to the east, we have agricultural and the sewage treatment plant. So, you know, I, I think there's, there's, there's arguments for allowing the change.
Yeah, I'll second your motion.
Who made the motion, please? Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Batchor, to take items twelve and thirteen, and, uh, table those until, uh, future meeting, pending further discussion by planning and zoning, and coming back with a recommendation. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Item fourteen, resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-two, uh, resolution supporting housing and local decision-making authority. Phil?
So, I was, I s- I had a Zoom seminar for the League of Minnesota's, and they brought to our attention that there have been talks, uh, on the state level of restricting towns' independence when it comes to zoning, and so, more or less. Um, and the lead has recommended for s- cities that would rather have more independence when it comes to zoning and everything, our decisions when it comes to how we zone our town and everything, that we should pass a, or, uh, a resolution like this that you see in front of you.
I was kinda nervous when I read it. Didn't know what was coming down the pipe. But I think it's solid.
I think it's solid, too, yeah.
I don't need Big Brother coming in and telling me.
That's right, that's pretty much what it says, yeah.
I think we all heard you. You talked loud enough. I'll, I'll introduce, I'll introduce resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-two, resolution supporting housing and local decision-making authority.
I'll second.
Resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution supporting housing and local decision-making authority, introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Thomas. Further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Sharpie.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Four in favor, none opposed. The resolution is adopted. All right, uh, moving on to item fifteen. Twenty twenty-two goals, we touched on those last time, they're listed there. Um, now is the time to make any comments, any changes, any deletions, any additions. The ones listed, electronic records for the cemetery, uh, continue to follow the ten-year CIP plan, uh, task the EDA to look into low-income housing, uh, simplify or correct city codes, and update the city comprehensive plan. Um, I would like to see added to this list that we complete the dog park. I believe funds are adequate to do that. Um, and then, another item I would like to add is authorize administration to explore service from fiber optic provider. I was in a conversation today, uh, um, with Amy and a provider from, trying to think of the name. Company out of New Ulm. Nuver- Nuvera. Nuvera is approaching, or they are, uh, in the process of introducing fiber optics to the city of Glencoe. They will, uh, hook up or, um, create, uh, one thousand residential connections this year, the year twenty twenty-two. And, uh, they have approached city of Arlington with, uh, um, the offer to provide fiber optics to the city. Uh, of course, depending on how many people are interested in hooking up, that's where the, uh, their support comes from. I was asked, uh, what the cost would be to the city, and they said, nothing.
What was the name of the company?
Nuvera, N-U-V-E-R-A. Used to be called Nuam Fire, or Nuam Telephone, I believe. And they changed their name. They have, um, put forth a two hundred and fifty million dollar initiative to get, uh, a good share of the smaller cities in southern Minnesota done. Uh, they have pretty much everything done south of, um, well, more so south of here, more so in the New Ulm area.
Are they running New Ulm right now? Cause I know that there's a huge project there now with, uh, bringing underground homes.
That might be, well, that likely.
I was wondering if it was the same company.
Likely would be the one. So, um, I would, uh, ask that we add to the goals, that we authorize administration to explore that possibility. And, um, so that if there is any quirks in it, they can be worked out before budget time this fall. And hopefully, um, things could be worked out in that. They, they said they would do the surveying, as far as, uh, surveying the public, to find out how many residents may be interested. We have nine hundred and ninety-one, I believe it is, residential households. And, uh, they would, the city would not have to take care of sending out any surveys or questionnaires, they would do that. And of course, they are gonna be interested if there is enough to make it worthwhile for them.
Do they block, do they provide the service as well?
Yes. Yes, they do. They've been a company, Nuam Telephone's been in business for over a hundred years, uh, pretty solid, um, uh, company, so.
Do they offer just the internet, or do they offer TV server?
Telephone and TV streaming.
TV services?
Yeah. Yeah, well, if you have the, if you have the internet, the streaming comes with.
Right.
Well, yeah, but cable or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Some have like, uh, Dish or somebody else that's working with them, or they have a contract with one of those satellite companies, maybe.
Looking for a motion to, unless somebody else has some goals, or thinks that some of this should be.
No, I like.
Don't mind me, I have a question when it comes to low-income housing. Um.
Yes.
What, when it comes to low-income housing, what is council thinking? Like, are we talking Section Eight, or are we talking public housing, or maybe a combination of both? You guys have any, just like.
For me, I would be talking something that somebody can afford on a, um, lower level of income, not, not necessarily subsidized from the government.
Well, okay, then, well, the reason why I bring this up, because when, when it comes to low-income housing, the main two things that it always refers to is Section Eight housing, which is nine times out of ten, it is, and public housing. I just wanna make it clear, if we would decide to do some form of public housing or Section Eight, it would require some type of housing authority to handle that. Because you will need to process, because I'm not sure how Minnesota s- state does it.
How would you phrase it, I guess, from my perspective, how would you phrase it differently?
No, no, the, the phrase is fine. I just was just curious how, what you all would, would think with that, cause to me, it comes to straight. When I think of low-income housing, it normally refers to Section Eight or, uh, public housing. But what, what you guys are looking at, it's just more looking for like affordable housing, kind of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, on a dirt cheap level, the, you know, a low end and a high end, probably six to twelve hundred dollars a month, maybe, and a thousand or less would be, would be optimal.
And with that, I can tell you right now, the way the housing market is, it's going to be very hard to do that without some type of subsidy, um, from the federal government or from the states.
Well, the, yeah, I mean, and I guess the goal says that the EDAs have to look at the low-income housing.
So.
And, yeah, I think that's a satisfactory thing, you know, just as long as we're, we're included at the council level to have discussions.
Right.
Uh, you know, about what they're, what they're coming up with.
And when, when it says correct city code, does that mean ordinances, or?
Yeah, we've started working on that.
Yeah, that's a big job.
And the planning and zoning, yeah. There, there is a couple of things that, in planning and zoning, that we're working on, that kinda, I mean, the, the three here, looking at the ordinances, looking at, you know, and then that city code, and, um, looking at the comprehensive plan, and those are huge tasks.
Does, does it have a different housing option? It's not just building a new house.
Right.
There could be a tiny house, you could have a little home, you could have, I mean, there, there's creative options, I'm. I'm not saying we're gonna get somebody to be able to buy a brand-new house for six to twelve hundred dollars a month. I just think that there's, um, you know, not everybody's making an income that can afford fifteen hundred and fifty dollars a month.
And, okay, I just wanted clarification, that's what I assumed you all were talking about, but you know what to say about assuming. Also, pivoting to the city code, does council, pretty much when it comes to city codes, it's the city chapters. Does council want P and Z to work on the city chapters? Cause in reality, if you look at the city chapters.
I thought it was.
Yeah, we're, we are looking.
The, really, the only, I mean, I'm fine with, with planning and zoning do it, but, doing it, but when it really comes down to our city chapters, which are our ordinances, planning and zoning, unless council says otherwise, we really only have authority over the planning and zoning code. And the reason I bring this up is because our fence chapter. Even though they need a land use permit for a fence, we have to, like, you can't get a variance for a fence, so therefore, zoning has no authority over that chapter.
Then we should come up with.
That's why we're going through the chapters.
Another committee to go over ordinances, because they need to be gone over, they're obsolete.
That's planning, that's planning and zoning, that's what we have been doing. We've been going through.
I'm just looking for, no, I'm just looking for clarif- no, all we're going over is the zoning code, which is chapter thirty-one of the city code. That's all we're going over in planning and zoning, Michelle.
Yeah, unless this goal goes through, then we'll be going over codes as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Ordinances.
Yep.
Goals.
City codes.
As amended during this meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Thomas, to approve of the twenty twenty-two list of goals with those, uh, including those that were, uh, included or added, I should say, uh, at this, this council meeting. Um, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion is carried.
So, to clarify, talking about simplifying and correct the city codes, we're talking about the ordinances through the planning and zoning.
Okay, item sixteen, recommendation of council to fill seat left vacant by Councilmember Craig Bus's resignation. The interviews were done, and, and, uh, all the, those interviewing, interviewees were asked to rank the candidates, and I think, uh, Mr. Mangus has, uh.
Yes, I have.
Can I say something?
Yes, you may, yes, you may.
Before we start showing things, so, I definitely wanna share that, uh.
Put your microphone on.
You know, share to the candidates who applied, um, you know, thank you all for, um, showing interest, taking the time to, uh, you know, apply for, for the open seat. Um, definitely appreciate it. I think there was, you know, obviously, coming in front of a group this, this large and answering questions out of the, you know, that maybe you haven't heard before is, is definitely, could be intimidating and stuff, so, uh, definitely appreciate that, um. You know, we have what, a year, i- i- does this seat have a year left on this open seat?
Three years left.
Three years left.
So, this one is three?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, there will be another seat, you know, coming up here in November, possibly, you know, two, I guess, I, I'm not sure where they all, uh.
Two expire, yes, and my term expires also. So, yours expires.
Mine expires.
Mine expires, so.
So, there's, there's definitely opportunity, I, you know, obviously, we, you know, we're asked to, you know, look at it and judge and, and, you know, rank and whatnot, so, um, that's different from the people, right? So, the, when, when you go on the ballot, it's gonna be the community voting, and, uh, so that, that would be obviously slightly different than this, this go-around, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that, that, you know, this isn't the end. Uh, if, if that person doesn't, you know, if you're applying, you didn't get it, there's, there's gonna be more opportunity.
Good point, good point.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you for that. Um, I think the purpose with this is to keep, maintain anonymity, and, uh, so the numbers, as far as the ranking numbers, Mr. Mangus will be telling us what those are, not from who they are, and we can just judge from that, um, what action to take next. So, if you'd wanna go ahead?
I'm just gonna read down what, um, council voted, so for Christine Liffel, one, councilmember voted thirty-two, for Tom Housstad, forty-two, for Dave Meyer, Meyer, forty-five. Then, another voted for Christine, um, Liffen, I'm not sure.
Liffen, Liff.
Uh, sixteen, Tom Housstad, thirty-three, Dave Meyer, forty-two. Another, uh, Christine Liffen, thirty-three, Tom Housstad, thirty-nine, Dave Meyer, thirty-nine. Then, another, uh, Christine Liffen, thirty-one, Tom Housstad, forty-one, Dave Meyer, thirty-six. And by totaling them up, Dave Meyer had, um, was the highest score out of those three.
Do you have a total there?
Um, the total for him was one sixty-two. Um, do you want me to read for all of them?
Yes.
Okay, for Christine Liffel, her total was one twelve, Tom Housstad was one fifty-five, and Dave Meyer was one sixty-two.
Sixty-two. Okay, open for any discussion or comments?
Um, so that was council members, there was four that were listed. Mayor, your numbers aren't in there?
My numbers are right here, and I'll use them if I have to. If there's a tie vote, I will use them. My numbers are not in there.
Is that fair?
That's fair enough.
That's the only time I vote.
The four.
It did not include Amy's, so it's just including.
Only voting members.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
As the mayor said, his only count, there was a tie.
Yep, so what is it? Christine had how many total?
Uh, one hundred and twelve. Tom Housstad had one fifty-five, and Dave Meyer had one sixty-two.
There you go with the numbers. Two of them were close.
Yes.
Very close.
I mean, to have maybe discussion on, you know, what the differences were or not. Well, I mean, and we individually ranked them, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Given each question five points or whatever it was, so.
So, if someone wishes to make a motion? There may be a need for a, um, resolution at the next meeting. Amy didn't know for sure if it was required or not, but.
A resolution to appoint a.
Yeah, this would just be an indication of who, but the formal resolution may or may not, depending on what she finds out, may be necessary at the next meeting, which is just a formality.
You did it three, you guys did it three times before, should know what you gotta rub through.
Well, I mean, if there's no discussion, I'd make a motion to, uh, accept Dave Meyer as our next council member?
I'll second that, based off the numbers.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Thomas moved that, and Councilmember Sharpie second, that, uh, Dave Meyer be declared the, uh, individual to fill the vacant council seat. And that would be for the remainder, is a four-year term, so a three-year, almost a three-year remainder, ending December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. All right, thank, thank you, the, the ones that are here tonight, and the ones that, uh, expressed interest, we appreciate that very much. Item seventeen, approve or deny payment to Bolden and Mink for preliminary layout corresponding estimate for county road one sixty-six extension. Not to exceed five thousand dollars, um, in your packet was a map of, uh, the proposed one sixty-six extension. Um, which would connect county road seventeen to state highway five.
And that has currently changed to what I have on the screen here.
Yeah.
There's been, uh, there's been many maps, there, this is, I want to stress.
Oh, okay.
That, um, a few private developers have came to us and were interested in. Finding access to pretty much the parcels that are in question around in this section, as you see right here, so. This was brought in from the EDA, the EDA discussed and said that there was a one-time talks with the county about extending county road one sixty-six. I reached out to, um, Tim Becker, the public works director, and said, um, if, if the, if the city's interested in it. Let's, um, they're not necessarily against doing it, um, we did, we looked for ways to find funding for it, we talked to the, um. Our senator and our house representative, they said that, um, we, if by, I think the end of March. They want us to pretty much draft up some engineering drawings for them, so we, they can pass a bill to get on the bond stuff to help provide funding. Because from what I'm understanding, there's some state funding that we can get for this, um, so that, that's pretty much what we're asking for. Is to create some engineering drawings that obviously won't exceed five thousand to help us get, craft a bill. That hopefully that will get, um, approved and the state will then get some money for this.
In your meeting with the county, uh, I think, believe Jason Femrite, our engineer, was there also?
Yes.
And he did indicate at the meeting we had here, prior to that, he indicated they would do some test borings? Is that part of this five thousand?
Yes. Um, it would be.
It would be, okay.
I, in my, um, cause I.
So, right, so is this, is this, I thought that, that, uh, the, the push to get this done, that the county was gonna be. What portion is the county paying for this, or is this all us?
Um.
No, it's not all us.
No, this would be the, the Congress.
No.
It's to try and get on the county's plan for, to, and then with state funding, to take care of it.
Right.
I mean, the one thing I asked about where we have that line drawn, you know, isn't there a house right next to that?
Which.
Absolutely.
I know whose house it is.
You're talking about this one or the other?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That, like.
Well.
We're still in the preliminary phase, so this, this could easily change and we can move it down to.
Yeah, yeah, and that's all those things that have to be dealt with.
So, so at one point, and I know that the county has maps of one sixty-six where it was going to go and it wasn't gonna snake up by the railroad tracks.
Right, right.
It was gonna go just directly straight across from east to west from where sixty, one sixty-six is correct, directly. And then go all the way out, um, so, so, so that, that's one thing, and I, and I know that they had like. Some kind of preliminary stuff done on that already in the books, and then the second part of that. Is right where that road curves and goes to the north on the west side of that map.
Top line, right here?
Right there, get down a little bit on that property, that's the city's property, there has been boring done there and. Right around in that area, because we did soil samples, remember that, Rich? There's soil samples that have our har- already have been taken place there, not extending to the east.
Okay.
But in that area that goes up like that, so, just to be aware.
And if those were done, if those were done by Bolden and Mink, they would have record of those.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
I think it's this whole area along here is where they're concerned about the, uh.
Right, yeah, but the one that, cause I mean, what they ended up finding is that, that was pretty much, um, uh, you know, wet swampy-ish area.
Well, we heard in firsthand testimony about tractors being stuck.
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah, yep. Well, you can just look at the land and see where it's kinda lower or where it would be low.
I guess, uh, help me understand the whole no longer going straight again?
Well, this was just, um, the reason why this was made as a decision is because this, it's the railroad comes through here. Given that this already has, uh, um, pretty much access cutting through there, that's why it's gonna snake up there instead of cutting through. Cause we don't know if the rail authority would permit us to make another, um, cut right there, at the same time.
More, the DOT didn't want an, uh, on a curve.
Another access. Would some of this started from that land we own that we have no access, wasn't, I guess?
No, this has nothing to do with it.
I thought it was.
This was brought.
When it was gonna go straight.
This was brought to us by two, two private individuals that were interested. In just wanting to know access and seeing if there's anything that we could do, and like I said, this came about. And the EDA, um, decided to see if we could, if this is still possible.
So do they own land already, or are they just inquiring?
Yes. One of them does own land.
Okay, and it's connected to that, or, or?
Yes. Yes.
So, does, the, does the county have money then to go ahead and move?
Take the high seat.
Take the high seat.
Take the high seat.
Yeah, we, I'm from the EDA, anyway, you know that.
Yeah, you were at the meeting earlier.
Yeah, I was at the meeting, the biggest thing is, is if we get a road like that, we can get a lot of trucks off Henderson Road. Keep them off Henderson Road and all the trucking would come down to that road into.
Northland.
North and Dry and then maybe into.
Data.
DMI.
Yeah, data, and the back end.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's one of our big issues too, is that.
But what about the house that's right next to it?
Yeah, there's some talk of moving it out a little bit more, the road, so we don't have to hassle with them people.
That, like, it's almost like. In their living room.
Right.
Right, especially if we're gonna put trucks on it.
But Danielson's own that property, the family, Danielson's, and I think Amy said about two years ago, they talked about developing that out.
Mm-hmm.
So that's another issue is the housing, we don't have no land, any other place to build factories or businesses. So we figure why not extend it out into this area, you know, cause there's plenty of land out there to build anything that wants to come into town.
So the land, the, the physical land and the houses owned by the same place, or just the physical land?
No.
Just the physical.
This is far more, um, right, so actually then with, with you saying that, Howie, and then the, them talking about doing probably residential on that farmland that's on the. East side there, I would say that how the road was going, when I first looked at the map and seen the road going into. Circle lane, I thought, why in the heck would you put it like coming in there? But if it's gonna be residential and then to actually use that area, it would probably make more sense to go into circle lane, honestly.
Right, the problem is, I think, there, it's like you said, it's all in, it's all up in air, but we need the five thousand dollars by March twenty-fifth. She has to have a project in, and the senator, the representative senator earns tons of money. And instead of giving us a hundred and thirty-five bucks back each, you know, they can use it here, anyway.
You're not gonna get a hundred and thirty-five dollars, Howie.
But the road itself is just preliminary, we, they, nothing said, it's just, we just need to.
No.
No.
Well, but if it was circle lane, it's different, if they're checking that area.
I mean, it's totally different.
I'm not trying to stall, I'm just saying.
No, I think they have to look at all the boring, another issue is Henderson Road, if you bring that road into that, you got five spots.
Yeah, that's what the en- engineer was saying, you're gonna have five roads coming into this intersection.
Yeah.
That's why.
Right.
And they wanna try to avoid that.
Maybe they'll cut Henderson Road off.
He even mentioned this, a, uh, roundabout, if you have to.
This is why with this new update, this has that roundabout.
It does have a roundabout, okay.
Is there enough space there for a roundabout?
From what the engineers have.
With an eighteen.
You, you would take away from that triangle property owner.
Again, it's preliminary.
From everybody, yeah.
And that other one, the other ones you couldn't take away from, you'd take away from the west.
From what I understand from the engineers, it is possible.
I think the biggest thing here is to get the five thousand dollars so we can.
At least.
Start getting the borings going and we can get on that state funding.
Right, but before you do the borings, you gotta kinda have an idea where the road's gonna go.
Right, right, but that's what Bolden.
So that's, I think, the discussion though, too.
That's what they're.
That's what.
This is probably what we're looking at.
When Bolden Mink was here that day, and we pushed him and said, how fast can you do it, they can start anytime, so.
Yeah.
You know how it is, money talks.
As far as borings and, and that type of thing, planning.
Yeah, you can bore.
I also want to show you guys what the EDA throughout discussions, this is pretty much what the EDA is looking at. I mean, this is what the road going straight, but this is more or less what the end goal would be, the objective of why we would have this road. Is because if we want to, as Howard stated, we really don't have anywhere to expand our heavy industrial stuff, a proper place, so. That would be by putting that road in, that would be the best alternative for us, at the same time, we could also expand a little bit of housing too, that would benefit us as well.
We did talk about the twenty-two acres that we have, is to split it in four sections, instead of just giving one person a wall of wax.
This year.
Yeah, that's just, it's preliminary too, but the EDA is, right, yeah.
Yep.
It just creates more options in that area.
Right.
You could look at maybe cutting off the angled one and then just having it an actual T if they do go that way. Cause the people could always just drive it here farther forward and get back there, then you don't have a final intersection.
Yeah, cause if you're gonna have an area where you're gonna be doing the borings, you're gonna want the borings done from approximately where you're gonna put the road.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, to me, I mean, it makes sense to throw, it didn't make sense when I was looking at it before, but now it does make sense to kinda. Bring it to that circle lane, interject there, have the intersection there on your prior map, not that one, the one that you sent us in our packet.
The one that you sent, this one.
Not that one.
Yeah.
But evidently, there's some reason why Bolden and Mink is not choosing that.
Well, but it's heavy trucks, you got the deal, you got the county guys leaving, and they would potentially take that route too to, to go the other way. The plan, then get all these trucks, get the trucks off of Main Street. If it was straight. Yeah.
Yeah, right off Henderson Road too.
Yep.
You shut that down.
Yeah, I thought I wondered, it's, you know, it'd go that way.
You could probably close that road.
Literally get rid of that, the section right there.
Henderson Road.
Of Henderson Road, yeah.
And walk a lot farther and then loop back in there.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, cause it would connect with, then, um, what is that, that goes past, uh, Four Seasons Park?
That would be, uh, First Avenue.
Second Avenue, First Avenue.
First Avenue, there is some advantages with, with this coming up and crossing right here, uh, you have a, uh, what do they call, staging area?
You just have to go straight up there.
So in other words, large trucks coming off the highway would have.
Ample space.
Space for probably two semis in there, whereas if you come across straight, you're cutting a new, new path to the highway, no staging area.
Right.
You've gotta put a, uh, uh, crossarms in here, and you've gotta put crossarms in here, so you're saving one set of crossarms by doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're twenty-five thousand a piece.
Right.
Quarter million.
Oh, yeah, quarter million, that's right.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand, yeah, yep.
Yeah, just for them stupid hearts.
Just for the arrows.
Yeah.
Do we, are we gonna send out some notifications to the affected people here, just that we're even talking about this? I mean, here we are, looking at getting the plan going and, and, and the person that's gonna be affected the most.
Well, if we're.
Probably in the twilight about it.
Once we start moving forward with this project, yes, they, we will have to notify them based on this, like, they, they will have to notify, but right now.
Yeah.
We're not even sure if, like, we're just pretty much in the planning stage right now, this isn't, we're just trying to get money so we can get, literally.
We, we've been on that rodeo before.
No, we're spending five grand. Yeah. We're spending five grand, we're going after funding, if it's gonna be in my front yard or my backyard, you know, I, I would wanna know about it.
Yeah. If I'm in favor or not.
And if, I could, we could reach out to them, I don't see that being an issue, but like I said, this is strictly.
I mean, the circle lane doesn't really affect them, but the one that we had drawn, when it's going right there, and the dude's got a camper sitting there right now.
And I mean, the reason why this wasn't, this hasn't been mentioned before to the public is because, based on our procedures and stuff.
They would, you would have to buy that car.
Private investors ask, ask us to look into something like this, there's a thing, particularly with the EDA, on level of confidentiality, so. It, once we move beyond this point, yes, we can start notifying people that we're in the works of doing this, and then we, I can talk to them, see how they feel and everything. I can bring this in front of the EDA and.
So if it's for two property owners that is requesting this? Not the people that live on that street or anybody else? But the whole town is gonna pay for it.
Well, the town, let's be clear, that, that, well, the goal is not for the town to pay for this, the goal is to get state funding.
Well, we got five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars.
Well, that's, that's as much as we're gonna pay.
Yeah, and I guess that's, that's a first step, you either spend the five thousand and let Bolden Mink do some preliminary work?
Yep.
Or we say we aren't interested.
Yeah.
So, in the preliminary work, is it gonna be evaluated, cause right now you've got some squiggly lines, you've got several different versions, are they gonna evaluate? That as a whole and make a recommendation?
I mean, cause I'm sure the road has to be so far away from housing.
Right, that, that, that's all gonna be taken into consideration.
Oh, yeah.
But, but, yeah, we have it right against that one hole, so that's what it was.
I mean, you drive, I drive by it every day, there's a camper sitting right there, the guy actually plows it occasionally, he hasn't got a plow right now, but, I mean, that's where the road would be.
Well, I mean, that's like in a mental main though, I mean, you just purchased the home, purchased the property, because it's too close to what you're gonna develop. I mean, it's not pretty, but that's what happens, right, for growth?
Yeah, that's.
Oh, my gosh, you guys, you look at me like I'm evil.
I'm not speaking for the EDA, but I think it'd be a good, better plan with this road, that way you don't have to worry about, uh, people saying things and, or how far enough.
Well, I, I agree, I agree, like, what I'm.
Yeah, that's, when I looked at it, that's what I think.
Well, you can sit there and go, we'll take the five thousand dollars and look at this.
So, so are they gonna bore both options?
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Not for five thousand dollars.
No, but I think the city council could say, we like this plan better, let's spend the money for this plan.
I mean, for the trucks, it makes the most sense to go the other way, but the, the, the challenge is, is.
Yeah, because.
But you can make.
Like, I mean, the dude's window's gonna be shaken when the trucks drive by, that's how close it is.
Uh, yeah, I mean, like I said, I mean, looking at the two options, I at first didn't like this one, but after. Looking at the other one that you've just presented, Phil, I do like this one better, because it accommodates everybody that's already living there.
Seems to me the question we need to have answered though is why did Bolden and Mink decide to change it, what is the reason for changing?
What I heard is because of the five intersections coming into that place, in my Henderson Road and stuff like that.
Yeah, but this isn't Bolden and Mink's, this is the one that we gave Bolden and Mink, I thought, is what he just said.
This, Bolden and Mink.
Uh, no, 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 this, sorry, this is me making my maps, Bolden and Mink requested this, they, they've given me.
Oh, so we're, I'm totally confused.
Okay, so this is the one they're gonna bore?
No, this, let me, uh, let me clarify, this was recommended by Bolden and Mink, as was the, um, the one, this one as well. They have given us different mo- uh, different options.
So we have to choose?
We can?
Right.
And that is something based off, pretty much with the five thousand, when they do boring and stuff, they would see, based on these options that we have, which one would be the better option.
But I thought you said for five thousand, they're only just gonna bore one option.
We don't know that.
Well, the ground's frozen.
We don't know that.
Preparation on whatever thousand decides, if you wanna go that route or this other route, that should be, that'll be the one.
It'll be one route.
And if you guys recommend that these should be, we should go out away from the housing, that'd be fine too.
And at the same time, we could get better clarification when it comes to boring, based off the money that we're willing to spend on it, to see how they're going to do the boring, because. Cause it might be, they might be willing to do boring.
Clears money.
Well, you guys got the option to say which one.
Well, but the council can't say put it here if it, if putting it there isn't gonna work from an engineering standpoint.
Waste of money.
You know.
Well, I, you know, regardless, no matter what you do, it's just gonna, the project's gonna end up costing more if the soil's not up to par. It's more fill, it's more, right, you can put anything anywhere.
Or if you get the tractor stuck.
Well, that's, that's a peat filled, I just told, everyone knows that's a peat filled.
You can put anything anywhere. Well, it is, it is, but, but the whole thing is, I mean, you can kinda see where it all is. So you're ju- I mean, honestly, it's just gonna be what they're gonna end up, you know, what the project's gonna end up costing us.
Yeah, it's just crossing that area, it probably, the, the, the regular field over here is probably better, it's just in that diagonal section.
Well, I, I thi- I think the bigger deal is you disrupt the housing development, right? By putting it out farther.
Right.
Well, depend, you might be able to have houses on each side of it.
Each side of it, but March twenty-fifth is a thing, so maybe when Amy comes back tomorrow, you meet with her, or maybe, you know.
You definitely could have.
Cause she knows. Yeah.
Yeah, but they're gonna, I would assume that the, they're gonna look at different options when they bore it, and we're just saying, you can do this, but not to exceed five thousand dollars. I mean, we're not giving them a set.
No.
Set plan, just, we're just authorizing the.
Cause they're gonna have to figure it out.
Right, they're gonna have to figure it out, so what we're doing is just authorizing them to start, start.
Right, they're gonna have to figure it out, so what we're doing is just authorizing them to start, start checking into this, figuring out the, the best place to put this road.
All right.
Right.
Motion to make, uh, motion to approve five thousand.
Second.
To do which map, is it both maps?
Well, well, the way it works.
Whatever.
Whatever they can give us for five thousand, yeah.
The guy has a good point here, it says for preliminary layout and corresponding estimates.
Yep. I mean, we can't say direct your focus.
But which is the preliminary?
Yeah, cause they gotta figure it out.
They're gonna figure it out what the best road's gonna be.
No, why would they send that to us?
That's what we pay them.
So, I want them to send us, uh, before they get too far boring.
A preliminary, what, they're gonna, where they're.
A preliminary. Yes.
So, that's in your motion?
That's in my motion.
Well, that's, yeah.
But not a second.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Thomas, to approve payment of Bolton and Mink for preliminary layout, corresponding estimate for County Road one sixty-six extension, not to exceed five thousand dollars. Council to be informed as to their findings immediately, how do you wanna word it?
Well, I, I would, I would assume we would get those findings and then.
Well, that's.
Take them there, whether that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, each, yeah, but I mean, I'm, I guess my question was, is what map are they gonna use? Are they gonna use that map or are they gonna use both?
But, but if they start go.
They're gonna use whatever map is gonna work out.
I was gonna say, if they start down one and it's not gonna work, they're probably gonna move to the other one and see, is that option B gonna work?
Okay.
That's basically what preliminary is, we're not giving them a set map to go by, figure it, you know.
I think if it comes from circle lane, it probably can't be called one sixty-six.
Yeah, it'll take a jog, takes a jog, county roads do that.
I guess it could be, it does.
Yeah. Takes a jog.
I always hate that when that.
Yeah.
Talking to me and it's like.
Turn right, turn left.
Okay, any other questions on that, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carried. Uh, I think that's it.
We have the tabled items, right, or discussed?
Oh, the tabled items, thank you very much, yes, okay. The, uh, items E F G H, originally E F G H were tabled for discussion at this time.
Joe, I can speak on three of them, I've known about their resignations before this whole, everything started back in.
Yeah.
Long before then, I know Keith was talking retirement quite a while ago already, and then both carpenters were.
Yeah.
Along with quite a while ago.
Yeah, and that, I, I can.
You know, I, I kinda.
That, that, that the cor- carpenters had told me the same thing, I, I don't know Keith, but.
I had suspicion of that, I just. I didn't, I was, what I was thinking was it wouldn't hurt to ask, I mean, obviously, we went through a pretty traumatic, uh, few months of. You know, with, with things that were.
Up in the air.
Up in the air, unknowns.
Yeah, and I get that.
Um, you know, maybe even with, with, uh, you know, reaching out to John and asking him if it's something that he's interested in. You know, maintaining on the department, um, obviously, it's, it would cut his stress level down and, and the, in the time that, you know, he would. Uh, was, would be demanded of him, if that's something that he's, that he's open for. And that, that was just all that I was at, rather than just accepting and going on.
Right.
And we could reach out to John, I don't think that's.
But I know the other three, they, they had planned on this a while ago already, so.
And even if it was, they hung on for a few more months, right, we got, you know, obviously, we've got a couple people that might be going to, to class now, and maybe there's one from Gaylord that's possibly gonna be able to join.
We could, I mean, we could ask that.
John is not the type of guy that's gonna walk away and not be there for the guys and girls. He is there even though he's retired, I mean, you.
No, yeah, no, no, I, I just, I'm just thinking with him that, you know, this, you know, it was consuming a lot of his time. And, and maybe, you know, maybe he's open to, um, you know, maintaining on for a little while. It might already be completely ruled out, I'm just asking that we, you know, I'm just suggesting that maybe we, maybe we ask.
Well, I mean. You know, I, I think that we need to acknowledge every, a lot of the, uh, uh, what you don't understand is how much money he actually went out and got grants. For, for the fire department, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if any other fire, fire chief prior to him has done that, but that was huge.
Yeah, I think it should be recognized.
Well, yeah, I mean.
You know, that, that's, like I said. Uh, like I said, I know, I know the, the other ones, this was all planned long before anything we did or anything, but that happened in the last couple of months, so.
It, you know. But, you know, the other thing that we, I don't, I don't think we do as a city is do exit polling on when people leave.
Exit interviews, you mean?
Exit interviews, yeah.
Yeah. That would actually, that's a great idea.
I mean. I mean, for every, uh, across the whole board, I mean, and that's even including council people, in my opinion, well, I mean.
Why would you, well, we gotta, well, they're gone.
Well, I mean, for, if they didn't file for reelection or if they're done, or if they leave a committee, I mean, it can be opened, uh. Because, I mean, sometimes people leave for.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
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 I, I kinda know what you're talking about.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying it might be a good.
It's not.
And even for retirements and stuff like that or whatever too, just to get a good handle on.
I, I do, I do think that's.
Well, that's, cause if they have suggestions how you can prove things, improve things, why not?
Well, yeah, or give kudos to, or give kudos to like what they're leaving, you know, what I mean, it's good to do the positive stuff, going right back at the people that you either retire from or leave from.
It's very popular.
So, oh, yeah, recognition.
Even though you're moving on to something, you know, bigger, better, or lateral or whatever.
Yeah.
So, I guess my suggestion, and, and some of where it comes from is, is, you know, I've had employees that have turned in notice. We sat down and talked with them and, and it's not always financial, I just, some of the cases, but there's been times where you're able to, you know. Meet some of the, you know, things that they were wanting to do for themselves, um, and.
And to retain them.
Yeah.
No, I know, I've been through the same thing.
Asking is nothing, the, the resignations have already been turned in, whether or not we accept, you know, like, I mean, obviously, we will have the vote on it eventually, but if, if I was up for it, just making the call to ask if, if they choose to maintain that way, then we just. You know, have it on the dock at the next.
Well, I.
Doug, you know only what, what's your.
What's your thoughts?
Yeah, what's your thoughts?
Ton of knowledge there, that would be really helpful, it'd be great if you'd stick around for a while.
You mean John?
Yes.
Yeah, but do you get any feel for the others as far as if, I mean, it was no surprise that they?
No.
Yeah.
Corey and Chad have been talking about it for a while and Keith is.
Yeah, I see.
Talking about it too, it really wasn't a surprise.
No, Keith's got his, whatever, twenty-eight years in, I think?
Yeah.
And he's, that's when he, he was, I know Corey and Chad, they're getting, they're up there too, but.
Chad at that twenty-eight, Chad at that nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we've heard for years that, and John has mentioned for years, he said we could have quite a few of them, you know, turning in their resignation. So, I guess I, I wasn't surprised by this, surprised it all happened at the same time, I guess, and disappointed the circumstances were what they were, but. So, what does the council wanna do with the four resignations? Table acceptance or?
Well, I think we need to accept them, I mean, it was their wishes, Doug, if you wanna reach out to John with them that.
Well, once they've resigned, then how do you, I mean, you just, you just, if, if they choose to stay on, they just.
I mean.
I resigned, they ambulance, went back on.
Okay.
Consulting and or joining or.
So, I'll make a motion to approve their resignations.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Batchor, to accept the resignations of, uh, the following, Chad Carpenter, Arlington Fire Department, effective January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Corey Carpenter, from the Arlington Fire Department, effective January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Keith Dresen from Arlington Fire Department, effective February first, twenty twenty-two, and John Zaski from Arlington Fire Department, effective February second, twenty twenty-two. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
Mister Thomas, how did you vote, I didn't hear your.
Well, I, I think we should reach out to Jenner, so I'm gonna go no.
Are you vote? You're gonna vote no?
I think the discussion without accepting the resignation maybe has a little bit more, um. Possible impact, it may not affect it all, but, you know, it just means that we're, we're giving it that extra step to, um. Try to make it work, I guess.
Well, that's nice, but earlier today, you just appointed Doug as chief. So, I'd be.
No, no, I understand that, you're gonna stay on.
Well, I'd be, I, I.
It's not, it's not to have John stay on as chief.
But it doesn't say chief, it's a, it says, it's a.
Just to stay on.
It says that he's resi- his resignation from the Arlington Fire Department is what.
Yes.
I thought it was chief.
No, it does not say.
No, it doesn't.
No, it says chief.
All, all of them saying.
It just says from the department.
Getting, it says from the department, and that's, I guess that's what I'm alluding to, is that it's.
So, you don't wanna, okay, okay.
I'm not saying that I wouldn't, all I'm asking for is that we, we reach out to them, to all four of them, and if they, if they say no, no, um, you know, mine is made out. It doesn't, it's not gonna impact it at all, then, you know, fully accepted.
Okay, with two votes in favor, two against, I will vote, uh, against and, uh, just take that extra step and approach them.
I don't need it, I don't need it because I already talked to three of them, I already know what their answers are prior to this, so, I mean, I just, like I said, I just.
Yeah.
So, that motion fails three to two. And now we have to decide who's gonna approach him.
I, I guess I would like Doug to, to do so, if he's up for it, which it sounded like it was.
Do you do that? That would be appreciated, maybe get back to Amy with the results or with the answers?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
All right. To the appointments of what?
They were already done.
Oh, yeah, yes, they were already done.
Um, Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I think procedurally, you know, since it was on the agenda, perhaps it'd be appropriate to have a motion to table it, uh, till the next meeting. Otherwise, it's just kinda drifting out there.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, because we, we didn't accept them, you're right, you're right. Okay, that motion, the motion to, uh, accept their resignation failed three to two, now I need a motion to table those four resignations until follow, the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table them.
On second.
Motion to table the four resignations of the fired, fire, uh, fighters, uh, made by Morg- uh, Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Thomas. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
Motion passes. I think you did say aye, didn't you, uh?
Yeah.
All right, okay. All right. So, that one is tabled then, got that, Phil? All right. Committee updates, anything that needs to be talked about that hasn't been brought up yet?
Yeah, I was at a city east community education advisory council meeting last Thursday. Um, they talked about, um, summer school rollover, uh, they get to roll over some funds that they didn't spend, so they're gonna do some extra. Um, five, five full weeks over the summer for, um, additional summer preschool, um, for, for students that are at risk. Um, there was, um, some money sent back from the, um, MDH state stabilization, stabilization grant. Um, it could only be used a specific way and the, uh, for, um, wages for the employees, um, that are working with these students. Um, and the wages, um, are low, too low, and they can't. Communities education couldn't pay those pairs or that staff more money because it's not in the contract. Um, so they had to give some money back.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's kind of sad, um, contracts weren't done and that could have been part of it. Um, they're looking at, um, going from thirty-five kids to about fifty kids in the summer childcare this year. Um, so that's a nice jump, um, from one year to the next.
That's a childcare thing?
Yeah, yeah, their childcare that they run, Wolverine Care, Summer Care, so it's all school age kids, right? So, I think it can be in preschool, I think age three through, I'm not sure how old you send your kids yet, but. Uh, they're gonna be doing some preschool screening on March fourteenth and fifteenth at the elementary school in Gaylord. Uh, and registration for preschool is gonna be in April, that's gonna be announced here shortly. There is still not a pool manager, uh, so the pool at the school is still closed, has been closed all year. Um, they, I think they're expecting some, um, the school is expecting some, uh, or probably retirement in the FIAID department in the next year, potentially. So, they're hoping to add that pool manager position onto the FIAID, um, teacher position when they, when they put that out there. Um, that's still potentially, that's not a solid for, for whatever thing, but, um, I know a lot of talk was. It costs the school, um, forty, forty thousand dollars a year for the pool, and it's not being utilized, there's no money coming in at all. So, um, everybody there is pretty disappointed that we can't get that up and going, and I know just from other people that they want to see that open in town.
Especially in winter time.
Especially in winter time. But, you know, even in summertime, you know, there's, unless you bus or can get your kids out of town, there's nothing for these, you know, younger kids that can actually go and do something, do to cool off or whatever. I know at one point, the city used to, um, don't, uh, give some money to the school towards the pool to keep it open during the summer hours. That was probably, I don't know how many years ago that was, but I know that got stopped now.
Hmm, I think that was even, was it twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was substantial, to keep the pool open though.
It was a huge, good, pretty. Yes, yes, for the summer.
For the summer.
Hmm.
Yes, the reasoning at the time was the city doesn't have a city-owned pool, so this was in effect, the city pool. And so, the council at that time, uh, budgeted for, uh, some of the support of the pool. Um, I think it was perceived that, well, this is my own vague recollection, uh, that, uh, uh, at some point, the school was kind of. Building in costs, uh, uh, that maybe weren't directly related to the city's intention. Uh, so there was some miscommunication there. Um, also, I guess the city perceived that the pool was being utilized regionally. Uh, and regularly or wrongly, a council at some point thought, well, the taxpayers of Arlington are subsidizing the pool, but a lot of the people using the pool are coming from out of town. And so, the council at that time, I guess, just didn't like the feel of that. And those are the two things that I recall were discussed when the council decided to terminate that pool support. That they felt the school was fudging the numbers a little bit and that out of town people were benefiting. You know, I'm not commenting on the council's views on those things, I'm just relating my recollection of what the discussions were at the time, that we terminated that support.
Yeah, in retrospect, now looking at it, bringing people in from other communities is like what you wanna do, right? To help your, help the growth of your community, to support your local businesses, but maybe that's something we wanna look into at some point or whatever, give our kids something to do. Um, so, and then that was just all business or whatever, talking about that pool manager position. Um, so, they're still practicing mandates for COVID and different procedures and stuff like that, not, that's, there's no mask mandate or anything like that, but just cleaning and. And, um, you know, making people aware of their health and stuff like that. Um, there's some after-school enri- enrichment funds available, um, that sh- uh, community that is bringing in a couple of different activities. One was like a mobile learning lab, and that was to, um, kinda focus on the high school age kids, middle to high school, high school age-ish kids. That's coming in March seventeenth at the, um, senior high in Arlington here. Um, there's another, um, uh, Kid Create, um, that's more like art projects and that sort of thing for all age groups. Um, they're targeting at-risk students, um, at at-risk times. So, they'll be coming in more regularly and right after school, so that, you know, three, three fifteen to that five o'clock time area or whatever is when they're gonna be, um, running those. Um, the winter, spring bulletin, or they're getting ready to print the summer bulletin. Um, and we're, they were talking about what to add. Um, and we're, they were talking about what to add in that bulletin, or that brochure. Um, and talking about adding like a, um, calendar of the events in the area, so, um, like extravaganza. Um, different other th- uh, farmers markets in Arlington, Gaylord, wherever else in the area that, you know, uh, the school district. Within the school district, uh, just kind of giving more, uh, acknowledgement to them, so you know what's going on or what to do. During the month, and kind of laid out more instead of a, a book that you read of different activities, and more like a calendar. You know, with the different things that you can sign up for and stuff, so she's gonna be, uh, looking into that to see, see how she can get that laid out. Other communities do, do their brochure like that. Um, she's, she's gonna, um, be getting Prairie Fire Theater in the summer. Uh, June and August dates, and that will be, I mean, we, right now, we're not using the theater, the auditorium at all at, at the school. Um, and that thing is state of the art, I mean, it is really nice, very, very nice. No, I, like, uh, I know we, the school is still looking for one act play, your musical. The, the couple that was, um, uh, the directors, the play directors, they, they, um, they're done. So, those openings have been there all year long, so the kids haven't had that opportunity to do any kind of theater. Um, and I, I would imagine that if this is in the summer, it would probably be open to all ages, instead of, you know, just your middle school to high school kids. Um, and then baseball opportunity, hoping that there's gonna be a youth baseball opportunity. And I, I learned something, um, Arlington and, Arlington and, uh, Green Isle used to be, uh, the Irish A's. Uh, they combined it with Gaylord, uh, two years ago, I guess. So, it's A-G-G-I for baseball now, and that usually services your second through seventh grades. Um, so they're hoping that they'd have enough kids for that league, the parent group is kinda. Uh, don't know if that's gonna come into community yet, or gonna stay with the parent group. Um, and then I guess Sibley's hired a new baseball varsity coach, Brian Genicki. So, um, he was talking about having some involvement with that youth program, which would be really good, always a good thing. And then I had to leave to come here to planning and zoning, so, uh, the, the other thing was, uh, community assessment needs. Um, and I suppose that's just like brainstorming about different activities that we can bring to community education for different things to do. So, if anybody at any time has any suggestions of things to add to that booklet, let me know and I can pass it along and bring it to my meeting, anything.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports, committee updates, open discussion, anything?
I just have one thing.
Yes.
Last Thursday, I had, uh, opportunity to host or help with the Leading Sibley Together group. We had sixteen people tour the town, um, we held our class at the school, at the auditorium, which, yes, it's really nice there. Um, they got to tour the school a little bit, learn about the different pro- couple of different programs that they have there. Uh, we toured David Metalcraft and Jean and Tom did a very good, excellent tour, it's, you haven't been in there, it's pretty cool now. Uh, much different than it was when we toured it the first time. Um, did who's on, checked out who's on first, and then finished up at eight town. And after it's all done, you know, they do a reflection and kind of a wrap up, and everybody kind of gave their comments and. Um, they were all very impressed with what we're doing in Arlington, and what we've done so far with, you know, with the David Metalcraft and all the things that we're doing, so. We're doing the right things, they were very impressed. Oh, and we toured the ambulance, I had to put Jamie on the spot, we were ahead of schedule. So, I had to find something to fill a half hour time, and since we were at Who's in First, we swung over there too, so. Cause they learned a lot.
What was the group that you were with?
Leading Sibley Together.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
It's like little cohort wor- group to build leadership skills, I think it started, what, four years ago?
Four, I think it's more than that, no, I did it two years ago.
I think four years ago or something, and then, um, I think they skipped last year though, right, because of COVID?
Yes.
But they meet, I think, once a month for nine months, and it's typically during the day, but they tour the different cities in Sibley County. And look at their economic development and.
Good program, you learn a lot, and you learn a lot of both towns.
Good. Your brother's doing it now.
Yeah.
Good networking group, from what I understand.
Yeah, they were very impressed with everything here, so.
Anything else? Motion is in order to adjourn.
Second.
Who's had second?
Me.
Yep. Motion by Thomas, second by Batchor, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Meeting adjourned at eight twenty-five. Uh, next month, we will be taking council pictures.
What do you mean, my?
Council pictures next month. A group, group picture.
Oh, when you have everybody?
Dress appropriately. I'm sorry, next meeting. Next meeting, we'll swear in our new council member, and then he'll be part of the group at that time, so, we wanted to wait to get the new council member on board.
What's your phone number?
What is it, March? No, 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 just wait, this is the first, February, um, next meeting. Next meeting.